Welcome, it is Tuesday, April 12th, 2016, and I, Nicole Green, Vice President of the Fairmont Area School Boards, call this school board meeting to order. For roll call, all members are present with the exception of Rufus Rodriguez, and most notably...
The exception of our Board Chair, Diane Gearhart. Diane passed away unexpectedly two weeks ago on March 29th. Diane held a special place in many hearts, and we'd like to give Board Members an opportunity to share their thoughts at this time.
I would just like to say what a privilege it was to have a colleague with the exceptional character and professionalism of Diane. And what I learned from her funeral is, and all the folks that eulogized her, including Joe here, who all did such a fantastic job, is even the people that I had never met confirmed exactly what I had already known about Diane, and she was that great same person to everyone, so it was a rare gift and a rare blessing to be able to work with someone like that, and even if you, if you had a child that went to school in Fairmont over the last eight years, even if you never met her or knew who she was, your kids and your family benefited by her work, and she was a champion. We'll definitely miss her.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure to work with her. She was a powerhouse and a great integrity, and she helped us do the important work that we needed to do and kind of steered the ship in the right course. So, she'll be sorely missed.
Yes, she will be missed, and by not just us as Board Members, but by as the community, as her family, and friends as well. It is very hard to speak today and think of her, and but as we go forward, I will always remember her comment in that "it's always for the kids." And that's the way we all feel, and that's the way it will continue, "it's always for the kids." Thank you, Diane.
At the District Office, there's usually somebody in our District Office about 10 hours a day, and at any given time during those 10 hours, Diane might pop in. And we always had to be ready for her enthusiasm and her questions, and I feel like the pressure's really on now because I know she's, I know that she's watching over us 24/7 now, instead of just 10 hours a day, so we certainly want to thank her for her service of eight years. She put probably 30 years of work into those eight years, and we love her, and we miss her.
Our sympathies are with her husband, Dick, their children and family, the many friends, staff, and students whose lives Diane touched. Diane is greatly missed. As Board Chair, Diane wore many hats. She was an analyzer, often looking deep into decisions, asking many tough questions, and ultimately coming to a strong conclusion of what she thought was in the best interest of the students. Diane was a promoter and supporter. She loved Fairmont Area Schools, attending numerous sporting events, concerts, and other activities. It was not uncommon to see her milling about the schools. She frequently asked, "What can we do to help the kids?" A couple of years ago, Diane decided to take up the violin. She began taking lessons with the elementary 5th and 6th grade orchestras. At our last board meeting, when it was over, she mentioned to me that the junior high orchestra's pieces were a bit more difficult, and that at a recent practice, one of the students leaned over to her and whispered, "It's okay, you'll catch on." While these words were spoken from the mouth of a junior high student, they could very well have come from Diane. Herself to each of us. "And so we will catch on. No one can replace Diane, but we can do our best to honor her by pressing forward in the pursuit of excellence for Fairmont Area Schools." Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Diane Gearhart. Thank you. Will we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have before you the minutes from the last meeting. If you've had, all had an opportunity to look over them, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I would make a motion with one revision in those minutes from the March 22nd meeting. I was not present. I was listed that I was, but I was not, so with that one slight revision, I would move to approve those minutes from the March 22nd meeting.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. There's been a motion to approve the March 22nd, 2016 Board Meetings, Board Meeting Minutes as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have before us the Green Agenda with one change that I know of, that's in the Board Committee Reports from SDCC. I will be reporting on that. Any other changes? I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the Agenda with addition.
Thank you, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the April 12th, 2016 School Board Meeting Agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now for celebrations and school and community reports, first up, we have the Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition with Stephanie Johnson as Coordinator, and we have some other special guests with her.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Johnson, and I have the privilege of working with this amazing grant through the Department of Human Services Drug and Alcohol Division, and working with these amazing students at school. And so I have some guests along with me today that are going to help us. We just want to share with you some of the wonderful work that this grant is doing at school and through the kids, so I'm going to let each of them introduce themselves to you and tell them what grade you're in.
I'm Emily Lubinow, and I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Crystal Morton, and I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Laura Harkey, and I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Madeline Matisson, and I'm in 9th grade.
Great, and so we want to just take a few minutes and show you a couple slides from some of the exciting work that we've been doing through the Coalition. We are the Youth Coalition, which we are Fairmont High School students, grades 7 through 12, living above the influence of drugs and alcohol, and our mission is we're working together to eliminate alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use among our peers, and empowering and supporting them to make healthy choices, and I'm going to let them tell you a little bit about each one.
Alright, so we have seven core principles, and we as leaders actually came up with these. And so, the first one is be positive. We grow the goodness in ourselves, each other, our school, and our community.
The second one is be leaders, be good role models, and strive to be the best we can and continually improve.
Number three, be alcohol and chemical free, living above the influence of alcohol and other drugs.
Number four, be honest. We want to be true to ourselves while respecting others as well.
Be friendly. Invite others to be part of our Yoko group and empower them to also make a healthy choice and a better community.
Be passionate. We are excited about our vision and committed to transforming our school and community.
Alright, lastly, number seven, be good examples. We want to treat others the way that we would like to be treated.
Around the community, we have many billboards and in our schools, and they're kind of all over, and they always talk about how most Fairmont teens would rather not drink when they're all hanging out with their friends.
Um, so, when did we go to that? November. November. In November, we went to the Youth Leadership Academy up by Brainerd, Minnesota, and while we were up there, we learned different ways where we can enforce our seven core principles, as well as other different leadership skills to help us grow our group in the school.
While we were at YOL, we learned a lot of team building exercises. We did a lot of team building stuff, and we really got to know each other as a whole group, and it was a really fun experience.
One of the most exciting things about YOL, Youth Leadership Academy, was that Joe Schmidt, if you want to switch to the next one, I think it shows him. Joe Schmidt was our main speaker there, if you know him. He is a TV anchor, but he also is a motivational speaker and a writer and a cancer survivor, and he spoke about his book, "The Silent Impact," it's called, and we learned that we make our biggest impressions when we're not trying to be impressive, and it was just awesome to see these kids. We got to take 10 kids from Fairmont School, and I was so proud to be representing them. There were 10 communities, so there were over 100 kids there, and leaders, youth leaders, and our state managers and everyone, and it just was a huge privilege to be a part of that group, to represent Fairmont, and to see our leaders develop from this, so it was very fun.
In December, we attended the Glow's Parade, and so we created signs, and we went through the parade, yeah. Yeah, our float, yeah.
Okay, so when we did the Glow's Parade, we had fun sending, handing out our glow sticks that had our message on them, and then our theme of the, our float was "Stop Out Bullying," and so we had, it was centered around Frozen, and then we kind of had like characters, and our message that night was "Stop Out Bullying."
Okay, so, um, another way to kind of get our group out there is we have posters all over the school that show all the fun things that we do, so maybe if kids walk by, they become interested in Yoko, and they're like, "Oh, I wonder what that is," so we have a lot of those around this school, if you walk around there and see them.
In the community now, we're kind of getting a reputation, and I have to say, it's really fun. People in the community have been asking us, "You have that Yoko group, don't you?" You know, "Are there the things you can do to help out?" And we want to help spread our message that, you know, most kids are, agree that they would not want to drink alcohol, and we have better things to do than drink alcohol, and so we helped out with the mall Halloween celebration, helping kids decorate and bring things home, and we had them play games and stuff with us at the trick-or-treating night. We also, we were at the Homecoming Parade, and spreading our messages there.
In December, we went to the Fairmont Elementary School to help with the elf shop that the K through 30, or 2nd graders get to go to, and this was also fun for them to know that we're here because like, nobody little knows really who we are, so like, they have something to look forward to, and it was just a good time hanging out with them.
Okay, so our leaders, we've been at the Family Fun Fair, and we'll be at the Youth Expo, Activities Expo, and then one thing was that I got to participate in the junior high rec night, and they got to roller skate, and that was fun being with them, because then they knew that somebody older was interested in their stuff, and they wanted older kids there with them, so.
And I can talk about this. So our Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition meetings are every third Monday of the month at the high school in the Staff Development Room, which is right behind the Media Center, and as you can see from our pictures, sometimes we have the Yoko kids come and tell us about what they're doing, and then we really, you know, try to do our best to be involved in the community and to be involved in the school to let them know, you know, what we've got going, and then there's a picture of us handing Andy Tredo and Kimnis a check, another one, and we've funded some of the monitors, which are great at the high school, if you've noticed them. They're there to show what's going on at the high school. They have announcements and things on them, and so our grant has funded that, and that also then allows us to help put our messages on there to remind kids that most of their friends are choosing not to drink alcohol. One of, okay, yeah, and one of the other things that we have, we've paid for is the prevention curriculum, and I think Crystal, was it Crystal? Do you want to talk about it?
Actually, we were the first year as 10th graders when we were in 6th grade. This was the first year that they ever brought the curriculum to the school, and I just remember for me, it was really eye-opening to see that, or to hear about kids who drink and do drugs, and it was, I learned a lot about what it can do to your body and how it affects others, and not just yourself, so that curriculum was really eye-opening.
Great, and so if you have a 6th grader at any of the elementary schools right now, at Fairmont Elementary School, or at St. Paul's, or at St. John Vini, they're all just getting their Slick Tracy curriculum right now, so it's just a great way for parents to start the conversation. It's a great tool. They're bringing home, so ask them about those Slick Tracy comic books, and you know, do the activities with the kids. It's just a great way to get that conversation started. So, then, yep, the next one, we also have the curriculum going in the high school. Chris Engelby and Matt Mahoney are shown teaching here. The, some of our curriculum, we have grades 7th and 8th, and Sarah Junkameyer teaches the 7th grade, and some of the 8th grade, and Don Walertage teaches the 8th grade, and it's also just a wonderful prevention curriculum, and we're honored to have that, so thank you for letting us have that in the school. I believe it really makes a big difference. Okay, we also, in the community, we do a sticker shack, which watch your local liquor store, or at Hy-Vee, the liquor department, they have stickers that just remind everyone to keep our kids safe and be responsible with your alcohol. And then, as I said, we funded the, the grant has funded the monitors at the high school, which give announcements, and that's a picture of that, and then the Service Day t-shirts, thank you, that have our message on the back, and the kids wear them when they go out and do service, community work, and that's just wonderful. And this is an ad that just reminds everyone that there is a community survey that is out right now, and if you were one of the lucky people, there's only 1,000 households in our community that received a community survey, please fill that out and send it in. It really helps guide our work. But anytime that you want to give your opinion or give me some ideas, we would love to hear from you. Our website is fsapcoalition.com, that's Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention, F-S-A-P-coalition.com, and we'd love to hear from you. And our last slide is just a picture of our Board of Directors, and this is kind of an older picture. We have some quite a few new people too that have been coming to our board meetings, but we just thank you very much for letting us share about what we're doing tonight. We really appreciate it, and we're honored to be part of this great community and great school system that we can help grow the positive.
Thank you. I just have a quick comment. If we all adopted those seven core principles, we'd be a much happier and healthier community, so I commend you all for your efforts to promote and live these principles. It's, it's encouraging and and wonderful to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the point that you made about when the kids were getting the education in the classrooms and that, to take the things home and discuss it with the parents, because many times that's where the problems kind of start, is that the kids don't feel that anybody's listening, or they don't know exactly what, what the family feels like, or what, you know, the morals and that are in the group, so you know, I just really appreciate that you've brought that forward so that the kids, you know, will know, and the parents will know who are listening as well, to have those open discussion with their children.
Good, that's great, and that's part of our positive community norms. Kids are five times more likely to use alcohol and drugs if they think everybody else is, so it's nice to be able to talk with that and be able to open that conversation, so. And we have lots of tools, conversation tools, which we'll be handing out at the family, or no, excuse me, at the Youth Expo on next Thursday, the 21st. We have conversation starters, we have sheets that talk about how to have those conversations, and you know, sometimes it's nice just to have those words, just to kind of be able to know what to say, and there's nothing wrong with that, so we're happy to have that, and we also have it on our website, so, thank you.
We now have a proclamation from Superintendent Brown?
We do, and a few folks want to come up behind me. I'll start reading. Proclamation, whereas Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention and Youth Coalitions have committed to working together with Fairmont Area Schools to make an impact on alcohol prevention in our community, and whereas parents are the number one influence in a young person's decision not to drink alcohol by encouraging them to make healthy choices that impact their future, and whereas prevention curriculum has been implemented in grades 6 through 11, reaching more than 1,000 students and their families to educate them on the dangers of underage drinking, and whereas based on data collected annually through positive community norms, student surveys, most Fairmont youth are choosing not to drink alcohol when hanging out with their friends and agree drinking alcohol is never a good thing for kids their age to do, and whereas kids who have conversations with their parents, teachers, coaches, mentors, and friends, and learn about the dangers of underage alcohol and drug use and its harmful effects, are 50% less likely to use alcohol and drugs, and whereas most parents are setting rules and expectations and do not allow kids to drink alcohol in their home, whereas Yoko students are committed to be positive peer leader, role models, working together to indicate alcohol, to eliminate alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use by educating, empowering, and supporting each other to make healthy choices, because together we can make a difference in our community and our school. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Joe Brown, joining the Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention and Youth Coalition do hereby proclaim April 2016 Alcohol Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in the Fairmont Area School District, District Number 2752, and we call upon all students, teachers, staff, coaches, mentors, parents, and community members to participate in this special observance by starting the conversations that are supporting our efforts to reduce alcohol and substance abuse among our area youth, thereby building a safe and healthy school and community where our kids can live free of substance abuse and its harmful effects. Sue, you ready for a photo? Okay, here we go. You got everybody here? Should we smile? Tell us when. Okay.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have Mrs. Chris Engelby here to discuss the high school blood drive and Community Service Day.
Good evening. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit about our blood drive this year. We had two successful blood drives at the junior, senior high school. Our fall blood drive was on November 20th. We collected 86 units of blood. On March 17th, we, our goal was 85 units of blood, and we actually collected 96 units. So we went over and beyond. We were still there after four o'clock. So I kept telling all the workers, "Thank you for staying after." So it was a wonderful turnout. So overall, students and staff donated at least 182 units of blood this school year. And this is a wonderful thing that our school did for people who are definitely in need of blood. And I know the Red Cross supervisor that I work with, she says, "It is just wonderful during the school year when these high schools can have these blood drives because in the summer, that's when they really, you know, see a decrease of how much is donated." So just a couple of thank yous I want to do. First, my student leaders, Ellie Tonder and Eli Green. I have worked with them for two years and this is my second year, so we kind of all worked together at the same time, kind of learning everything. They did an awesome job. They are just wonderful to work with. And so, and the wonderful thing when they are student leaders, after their second year, then they get a scholarship. And so since we ended up having that many units of blood, they're both going to be able to get a $500 scholarship through the Red Cross, which I think is wonderful. And it really is a nice thank you to them of putting all their time and effort into organizing them. Next year now, I have two student leaders for our next future blood drives, Claudia Blyce and Ben Hurnus. I look forward to working with both of them for the next two years. I would also like to thank Rebecca Denaway, who organizes all the schedules for the blood drive. And finally, I'd like to thank Marla Brumman, who comes to each of the blood drives to supervise our students and staff after they donate blood. And she is just a wonderful person to be able to, you know, catch anybody that maybe might faint or make sure that they stay there. We've done pretty good. We haven't had too many that have fainted and so, but, so all in all, you know, we really did a great job with our blood drives. And so next year, we look forward to having, you know, more successful blood drives. So, any questions on that? Okay. Our next one is our Community Service Project Day. This is going to be Friday, May 13th. And for people that aren't familiar with this is, is where we have our Cardinal Connection groups. There are 47 groups. There's about 18 average to each group, and an advisor, which is usually a teacher or a staff person. And we will go out for three hours and we will help people in the community. We always encourage maybe individuals, maybe elderly people that just can't do yard work or clean out their garage, or even wash windows. I even had like, an 80-year-old woman a couple of years ago, because she was just trying to get some ideas. And I said, "Well, you know, do you need some dusting or vacuuming?" She said, "Well, would they do that?" I said, "Yeah, as long as you show them." You know, maybe some seventh graders, you know, do a better job than seniors, because maybe the senior, "I just want to get this done." But, you know, I think they're willing to help people out. And we have specific grade levels. So we have seventh grade groups all the way through senior groups. So like, for instance, my group, I have seniors this year. And we've gone from Cedar Creek Park, we went to Gomser to clean one year. We've gone to a person's home for the last couple of years. We also have groups that maybe go to Humane Society. We have them go to Goldfinch. So we have a wide variety of things. I know we have a group, sometimes it goes to the downtown area and just kind of cleans up the sidewalks and stuff. So I'm asking for any community people that are willing to, you know, need help for this spring, to, you know, please contact me. There will be a letter to the editor in the Sentinel this week and in the photo press. And I kind of wrote up a little thing about this day and how to contact me through my phone number, my email, and maybe how to also get an application. And so there's an application that looks like this, and they just kind of fill it out. A lot of times, I'll just call them if they email me and I can call them. And I'll just kind of write down the information. The one thing that kind of scares them is when I ask them, "Can 18 students spend three hours on this project?" And they about, like, I think their mouth drops to the floor, because they're like, "18 kids?" And I'm like, "Well, just, you know, let's think about some other ideas." Or the other thing that works out great is I tell them, "You know, ask your neighbors. Maybe there's some neighbors that could use, you know, some work too, and then maybe we can split the jobs." And that usually works out good, too. And some of these groups will walk to their sites, some will get busing. And we have all the Yoko shirts, so it's kind of cool that we all wear the same shirt and, so that it's really a great experience for the kids to learn what it is to volunteer and to help others. And so that is what we're going to do. And then applications are due April 29th. And so, so I'm looking forward to getting, I have nine projects right now, but I know I have quite a few others that I contact for future that we've used before, so. But anybody that's interested, just go ahead and, you know, look for the sheet in the newspaper or photo press, or they can always contact the school and, you know, leave me an email or a voicemail. So, any questions that you guys have about this?
Are we planning to go to Sealan again this year?
I have not talked to the person that we went to, but if that's a possibility, we can, I haven't talked to my boss about that either, so. So I can't say yes or no, but I just, we're just kind of getting started on the, on the first stages of collecting all the projects and applications, so.
Well, if people in Sealan are aware of the opportunity, I'm sure there'll be some people that'll come forward with some ideas and some projects.
Well, I know what we did last year is Joe went with the other advisor and took a group down, and then they just spent about, you know, two and a half hours or so. And I think they also supplied lunch for them. And I think she was very pleased with them coming down. And so, and so that was great that we could reach out, you know, to that community too. But I've, I've had a few calls sometimes that are like, "Well, can you come pick up rocks out in the fields, you know, in North Rupp?" And I'm like, "Well, we can't do that." And so, because it gets kind of a stretch when we have, it takes a while just to get those kids to those sites with the busing and everything, but, but it's a very successful day. If it rains that day, if I have to postpone it, it will be the following Friday on the 20th of May, so.
They had some homemade cookies in Sealan, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, there are many, especially the elderly, the women, they'll say, "Well, can I make some cookies?" And I said, "You do not have to, but you will make that group very happy to have treats because kids love food." And so, and I think the people are very appreciative, you know, of what we do. And I've had some regulars. Every year, they call, they email and say, "Hey, we want this group, you know, to come back," or "We just want you to come and help us out," which is, which is great. And so.
Mrs. Engelby, I want to thank you for doing this for our community. It really shows our community how much we love and appreciate them as a district. And also that the great work that you're doing to help instill the intangible reward and feeling that we get from hard work and from service. And it's, it's a wonderful program. Thank you for being willing to take this on again.
Thank you. If you see me later on, when it gets closer to that time, I'm very stressed, so that's why it's, it is, it's a, it's a very big task, you know, to deal with. And so, any other questions? I just wanted to make one comment about Diane. As a staff person, I worked with her and I just want you to know that she was, it really was good to know that she was a school board member, that I could always call her and vent to her and, and maybe even ask her. I know this spring, I said, "Hey Diane, you know, I was just wondering if you could maybe meet, maybe we can get a few other school board members." She said, "Yeah, just tell me when and where." And she came and emailed and, you know, so I could, it was always nice to know that I could always, you know, rely on her. And she was such a, just a great person that was there for the kids. You know, yeah, sometimes maybe she wouldn't agree with us and that's fine. She's doing her job because she's, she's looking out for the kids and that's her number one thing. And so I just want to thank her and, and I, I just feel, you know, I know tonight's a very hard one for all of you and so, but she's looking down on us and I think you guys will continue, you know, to do the good works of what Diane was doing too. So I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have our superintendent's report and calendar.
Get the tears dried. Three things tonight I want to just brief the board on. First of all, the enrollment report, I think all of you have a copy of that in your packet. Dr. Rodriguez, I took your copy, but we are.
I took mine.
I took yours. Okay, thank you. Anyway, we're serving 1,699 students right now. And I just want to point out, that's 28 more students than we were serving a year ago at this time. So the beauty of that is that it looks like we're really maintaining our enrollment, pretty steady enrollment for the whole year. And that's good for the kids and it's good for the budget. And so we are serving 800 students at the high school right now and 899 at our elementary school. Just want to point out too, that last week, Mrs. Green and I had the opportunity, we went to phase four training of the, phase three training.
Three.
Phase three training of building a high-performance school board. And that was held at the Minnesota School Board Association. It was a day-long conference. And we were there with the school board members from eight different school districts. And it was kind of interesting just to listen to the other school boards. And once again, we want to just thank all of you for being on the board. Compared to many school districts, we're very fortunate to have a board that works so closely together and so positively together. That's not, we found out that's not always the case in some school boards across the state. But it was really nice to be with seven other school boards and to get some training. And I would encourage you, if you haven't been through the different phase trainings of MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association does a great job. And this training was held in St. Peter. And the third item is this calendar for the month. Tomorrow's a big day at the high school. If you can recall, tomorrow is our area career exploration day. We have quite a few hundreds of 10th graders coming in from North Iowa and South Central Minnesota. We have a number of vendors, I think we have 80 different vendors that are going to be there, that will be there to talk to 10th graders. I think three of you are 10th graders, so you have an opportunity to do that tomorrow. But if any of you have time during the morning hours, it's a great time, you can either come to the Performing Arts Center to see, they have a kind of a game show that goes on. Half the students are in the PAC Performing Arts Center, the other half are in the high school gymnasium. But it's a great time to see all the different job opportunities that are here in the region. And it's nice to see students from all the other schools. And more importantly, it's nice for them to come in and see our school. And then finally, just a reminder too, that next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, April 20th, is our retirement tea. We have a number of teachers that are retiring this year. And you'll see tonight also that our Director of Buildings and Grounds has submitted his letter of retirement. And so this is a great time to come and honor those individuals for the retirement tea that will be held in the Bud Room of Fairmont Elementary. And then finally, just a reminder, and I see the Chief of Police is behind us, and I think he's going to make a few comments. If you would, Chief, you start walking, I'll start talking. Chief is, I usually don't get to say that to police, by the way. But Chief wanted me to remind the community about on Thursday, April 21, from 5:00 to 7:00 is the annual youth activities program. And Expo, you're going to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No? Okay. School board members and members of the Fairmont Area School District Committee, on behalf of the Healthy Youth Committee, we'd just like to take this few moments to put in a plug for the Activity Expo that will be held on Thursday, April 21, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the elementary school annex gym. And we're just really excited about this thing, this event. It really is something that started out of the Healthy Youth Committee eight years ago, partly coming out of the Spark Summit that we conducted. And it's fitting tonight that I call attention to it eight years ago because Diane Gerhart was part of the committee to help host that event. Spark event is based on search institutes, developmental assets, and those communities that have more assets for their kids, the more likely they are to be successful and the less likely they're going to know me, which is a good thing. But the Spark information specifically is that, you know, every kid and every adult around has some special quality characteristic trait or something that they're really special at, that if recognized is their spark, that then they go off to go achieve great things. And it's not always sports. Sometimes it's arts or creative activities. In fact, there's much more common to have your spark a creative activity. And I just remember that Diane was very concerned about, you know, there's those kids that just rock in everything, but there are some that maybe only have one or two sparks. And she was really passionate about making sure that we as a community find those sparks and provide that for kids. And so this Activity Expo is just really all the great activities that are in this community. It's a one-time, a one-shop event where if you've sometimes heard kids say, "There's nothing to do in town," well, actually, there's just tons of things. And this event kind of brings all those different activities together, where parents can come with their kids, find out what kids can do, so they get hooked into these great activities, like even the Yoko thing, that's just one of them. So if you come to that event, there is a drawing for a free Kindle Fire HD. There'll be an opportunity to sign up for soccer, T-ball, girls softball, flag football, summer camps, Kiwanis baseball, gymnastics, tennis, track, baseball, junior sports camps, summer reading, Fairmont Summer Run, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Boat Safety, Vacation Bible Schools, and much more. So it's really a great event. And we're excited to have Kim Niss joining our committee because she's got so much capability and capacity and can really make us better as a community committee, helping kids. So anyways, just wanted to call attention to that. Thanks for the opportunity to put in that little plug, so, appreciate.
Thank you. Moving on to financial business, we have a donation. Dan?
Yeah, first in Appendix A in your packet, I would introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas $68 was donated to early childhood family ed by Darcia Schmidt. Be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Okay, we'll move on with the roll call vote. Danielle?
I'll second. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Julie.
Resolution.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Vice President votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Now we have financial reports and bills from Sue.
Tonight, on the agenda, we have the approval of the March 2016 Treasuries Report and single checks, wire transfers from March 18th through February, or March 18th through April 5th, and the payment of the April 12th bills. So if you have a two-sided document, it looks like this. On the top half is our, actually our expenditure report through the end of March 2016. So on the left, we have all of our different funds. And then we have the board-approved budget of the $23 million for all of our funds. Then our monthly expenditures are $1.8 million. And our year-to-date expenditure is $15,414,000. So then looking at a percent of budget, we're at 65.76% spent for the, all funds combined. Looking a little more specifically, like at the general fund, we're at 61.21%. So then when I look at that, I just kind of try to take a step back and look, overall, does that make sense to me? And so if we look at, like our teachers, they're at 58.3% spent because their paychecks start in September and have gone through, through March. Where our 12-month employees are at 75% spent. So when I look at that 61%, I feel like, I feel pretty comfortable with that. Then in the next part down, we have our transfers from March 18th through April 5th. And the second one down is our net payroll for March, $470,000. And the bottom one is our P-card payment of $45,000. And we'll look at those details here in a moment. And then at the bottom, we have our total payroll disbursements for March, $944,000. And then on the flip side, you have our end of March 2016 Treasuries Report. So listed there, we have all of our funds, each, different accounts within each fund, and our end of month cash balance. Any questions on that? Okay, then you'll have a P-card register in your packet. It starts with Amazon. The total amount of that is that $45,269, same that was on the wires. And just two to bring to your attention there. Not too far down is a payment of $36,000 to EMC Insurance Companies. We pay our property liability and work comp to EMC and we do that through our P-card payment. We pay that quarterly. A little down from there, we have our Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry, a payment of $400. And this is for our annual operation permits for our elevators. So we are required to have permits on our elevators, that they are operational and meet all the criteria. And we use health and safety funding for those inspections and then for the permits. Do you have any questions on the P-card list? Okay, then you'll have a single checklist that has five payments. When we have an extra week between board meetings, so like, in months where there's five Tuesdays, we'll have that extra week. So we try to monitor different. So we try to monitor different payments that need to be made to make sure we avoid, like, finance charges or just paying something too late. So here, we pulled out five to pay in between board runs. The middle one, Minnesota Energy Resources, that is for heating fuel for just a couple of small areas that we have. Any questions on the single checklist? Okay, then we have the registered data today, April 12. I just have a couple to bring to your attention. It's not a check, it's a payment through Commerce Bank, so then those don't actually have a check number, but Great American Opportunities for $4,233. That's for a fundraiser out at the high school. And then down a ways on your list, check number 58302, made out to Red Bull Wrestling. This is for the hotel rooms for state wrestling. And those were actually reserved through the association, the Wrestling Association, and so then we paid them. And then the next check down, made out to Region 2A Minnesota State High School League. This is for the subsection speech entry fees. So, Fairmont Schools actually collected the entry fees from the other schools and then made this $1,000 payment. And then Fairmont Schools had 31 entries into the subsection speech. So that is all I have for you this evening. I don't know if you have any questions. Julie and I did review things prior to the board meeting.
If there are no questions, I then would make a motion to approve the March 2016 Treasurers Report, the single checks, wire transfers for March 18, 2016, April 5, 2016, and payment of the April 12, 2016 bills.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. We have with us tonight Dr. Kelly Smith from Springstead to discuss bond refunding.
Good evening Superintendent Brown and members of the board. You're seeing me tonight instead of your usual representative Patty Hemanova, who is committed to another board meeting tonight in southeast Minnesota with a school district who has an upcoming bond election. And so she felt she needed to be there tonight. But I'm happy to be here to talk to you about a potential bond refunding that can save district property taxpayers some significant funds. Tonight before you, you have a set sale resolution that sets the process in motion to refund your 2008 alternative facilities bonds. This is a little bit different than refunding that you have done in the past. This is going to be an advanced refunding. These bonds are not callable until 2019. But because of market conditions as they are right now, we're recommending that the district move forward with the refunding at this time and sell new bonds to achieve the lowest rates possible. Once that happens, the revenue from the new bonds is placed in escrow until the old bonds mature. And that sometimes gets convoluted, but you will actually have two sets of bonds running parallel from May 24th, if you accept this, until February of 2019. And at that point, the savings of this refunding would kick in. The state mandates that in order to look at advanced refundings, that the refunding show at least a 3% savings to the district. And in your case, it exceeds 10%. This is a very good showing right now, and interest rates have continued to perform very well, so we're excited for the possibilities for the Fairmont School District. Some other things that are set into a process with this resolution, it really defines what gives you the authority to move forward in refunding this bond. The refunding is done through Minnesota State, Chapter 475 and Section 126(c)(55). We work with your Bond Counsel, Andrea Headkey at Dorsey &amp; Whitney, to prepare the necessary paperwork for the sale to take place on May 24 at 10:30 a.m. All this, all proposals from vendors would come to our offices on May 24, and the sale would close at 10:30. Within about a half an hour, Patty and I would be contacting Ms. Nelson and Superintendent Brown to give the final results and make a recommendation as who the best proposal is being set forward by. Some last things, the district has, currently has a Moody's AA3 rating, and you were upgraded last time you went through the rating process. We do need to go through the rating process each time you go out for a bond issue. That gives investors an opportunity to look at the district. Were there any significant changes in your district regarding employment, major employers, different things that might impact their desire to bid on these bonds? The rating is scheduled tentatively for the week of May 9. And I just want to make a comment that the district, if something strange and unusual would happen in the markets, that the district would decide, "We do not want to go forward with this." If that decision is made before we go through that rating process, there's no cost to you. But once with the rating process, there are some fees that will have been accrued and will have to be taken care of. But again, this is a very healthy savings in this particular issue, and we're not anticipating And as I mentioned before, this is a, an advanced crossover. The IRS requires that, that the funds from the sale of these bonds, the investment of those funds be put out to bid. And our colleagues in my office, who work with the investment side, will be doing that while the bond sale is happening. They'll be taking bids on what type of investment with government securities we can do as, for your district. So, we take care of all of that. It's not something that's put back on district staff in any way. And it has to be very precise because of the IRS regulations. And that is, that is all taken care of. For board members, as a former superintendent myself, and seeing an audit statement each year with a crossover refunding, it will look like you have extra debt, but you also have extra cash at the same time. And that will happen for several years until you sell those bonds, or call those bonds, excuse me, in February of 2019. So, again, it's a great opportunity for the Fairmont School District. 10.332% savings is what we project at current interest rates. That's $1.6 million in savings to your taxpayers at about $115,000 a year, starting in the year 2019. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
These are just, these weren't the Buy America bonds that we did back then?
No, these were general obligation, your alternative facilities bonds. Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We now have a resolution from Dan?
Yes, I would make a resolution and move for its adoption. The resolution authorizing issuance and sale of $11,900,000, general obligation, alternative facilities refunding bonds, Series 2016A.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, and then we'll take roll call vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Aye. Vice President votes aye.
Aye.
Julie? Rufus?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Now, we have Julie with MDE Identified Official Report.
Yes. MDE, as you know, is the Minnesota Department of Education. We have to have an individual in our district that is identified as someone who is able to get in and look into the records and stuff. And because Mary Cole works as our testing coordinator, she works with lots of different sites within the Minnesota Department of Education, and she's served in this role last year, and so we are just making it official for a second year here for her to remain in that position. So, I would approve naming Mary Cole as a Minnesota Department of Education Identified Official with authority to authorize user access to MDE secure websites. That's really an official title.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we need to move on to new business with the election of school board officers. The first position we need to fill is that of president. Do we have any nominations?
I would make a motion nominating Nicole Green for president.
We have a nomination? Oh, sorry, I don't say anything yet, do I?
I would move that nominations cease and that Nicole be elected president on unanimous ballot through December 31 of this year.
Thank you. We have a motion to, that nominations cease and-
We need a second.
We need a second.
Second.
Thank you, we have a second as well. That Nicole Green be elected president on a unanimous ballot through December 31, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Dan Brookins for that position.
I move that nominations cease and Dan Brookins be elected vice president on a unanimous ballot through December 31, 2016.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, that Dan Brookins be elected vice president on a unanimous ballot through December 31, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the position of clerk.
I'd like to nominate Danielle Schutz for that position.
Thank you.
And I'll move that nominations cease and Danielle be elected clerk on a unanimous ballot through December 31, 2016.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, that Danielle Schutz be elected clerk on a unanimous ballot through December 31, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we need to address-
Do we have to, do we have to do treasurer also, or can we just leave that as?
Because I am, I am, I'm not changing anything, so unless somebody wants to take my position.
Rufus? Okay. All right, then we need to move on to school board committee assignments. We have some vacancies, a couple of vacancies that we need to fill. The first would be on Staff Welfare Committee.
Yes, I make a motion to, I guess we're having Julie fill in that position, to nominate Julie, to be on the Staff and Welfare Committee through December 31 of 2016.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to have Julie Lowey serve on the Staff Welfare Committee through December 31, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we need to look at the Policy and Curriculum Committee.
Okay, and then there's a motion to have me fill in on the Policy and Curriculum Committee through December 31, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, to have Danielle Schutz serve on the Policy Curriculum Committee through December 31, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your willingness to serve on these committees and in these positions. Now we're going to move on to our calendar report, our calendar. It was presented to our Staff Welfare and Curriculum and Policy Committee and Operations Committee on Friday. And the calendar that is being brought forward today for approval is Appendix C, Calendar Two. And what probably the public would like to hear is, the first day of school will be September 6, with winter break beginning on December 23, with students returning to school January 3, 2017. And the last day of school for students would be Friday, June 2, with graduation on Sunday, June 4. I move to approve the calendar as presented.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. Now we have a special school board election that we need to discuss. Dan?
In Appendix D in our packet, whereas a vacancy exists in the office of school board member with a term expiring the first Monday in January 2019, and whereas, one year or more remains in the unexpired term. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 2752, State of Minnesota, as follows. One, the clerk shall accept affidavits of candidacy for this office during the same filing period as applicable to the school district primary election. Two, it is necessary to hold a special election to elect an individual to fill the vacancy in the term of the school board member expiring first Monday, January 2019. Three, the special election shall be held in conjunction with the August 9, 2016, school district primary election, and the polling places, precincts served, hours of voting, and election judges shall be as the same as at the general election. Four, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said special election to be provided to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located, in whole or in part, at least 74 days before the date of said special election. The notice shall include the date of said special election and the office to be voted on. The clerk may combine this notice with notice of the general election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least 10 days before the date of said election. The clerk is also hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the date of said election, and to cause two sample ballots to be posted in each polling place on election day. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be published in the official newspaper of the district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week before the date of said election. Clerk is authorized and directed to cause rules and instructions for use of optical scan voting system to be posted in each polling place on election day. The notice of election so posted and published shall state the office to be filled as set forth in the form of the ballot and shall include information concerning established precinct and polling places. And five, the names of candidates to fill a vacancy who have filed an affidavit of candidacy must be listed on the ballot under separate heading, "Special Election for School Board Member to Fill Vacancy in Term Expiring January 1, 2019." Their names must be listed as though they had been included by name in this resolution. The clerk shall not include on the ballot the names of individuals who file timely affidavits of withdrawal in the manner specified by law. The name of each candidate to fill the vacancy in office at this special election shall be rotated with the names of the other candidates to fill the vacancy in office in the manner specified by Minnesota law.
Thank you.
We need a second, and then I'd like to talk about-
So I would introduce the foregoing resolution and move its adoption.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I just want to point out a couple of dates. It seems like a long resolution, but this is to fulfill the seat of Diane Gerhardt. And just the dates to make it very simple for the public to know, but if you're interested in running for this special seat, the filing candidate deadline is, it starts on May 17 and it ends on May 31. So there's a two-week window that you can come to the district office and obtain an affidavit of candidacy. There's a $2 filing fee, but any time between May 17 and May 31. And if, I'm sure there's going to be people out there that want to run for this seat. And what I would encourage them to do is to make an appointment with either the district office or myself to come up. And we have a lot of information about what the role of- office or myself to come up, and we have a lot of information about what the role of the school board is, and we can provide that to you. We get that from the Minnesota School Board Association, but it's always nice to know, you know, what the role of the school board is, and how often we meet, and things like that. But if there's anybody interested, I would encourage them to come up to the district office anytime at their convenience, or make an appointment through Judy to come up and have a chat. And then, once those names are available, then we turn those over to the county auditor. And then, on August ninth, is a regular primary election here in Minnesota. And so, the same time that you vote for primary candidates for any partisan offices, there will be a special ballot, if you live in the school district, that you'll get to vote for this seat. And once again, the individual that's elected to the seat will then serve the rest of Diane's term, which is about two and a half years left.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
We were, we were very fortunate to have that election, primary election date, on the date that it happened. We are able to do this election without any added expense of running our own election, being as there already is a regular primary election scheduled for that day. Minnesota law used to hold that a board could appoint a member to fill out a term. That law was changed by the legislature last year. There's currently legislation going on to change that law once again, because it does cost a lot of money for a school district to put on an election like this. But fortunately, we will not be in that circumstance, so we are able to have a special election.
I would also offer that anybody who is interested in running on the school board, feel free to step into the office, the school office, and answer your questions. Otherwise, I would be welcome to answer any questions that you'd have about that. I'm sure any of our other board members would also be willing to share and, you know, kind of, you know, give some direction as to what the board, kind of, the meeting agendas and things are like and that, and anything we can help. Because we know, we do have this special election coming up, and then in the fall, then we will again have three open positions again for the board, as, you know, so, you know, we want, you know, we're going to have some open, you know, open positions, and so, you know, we would like to have people who are interested to come forth and take part, and, and help, help us with that vision to, to help it, you know, help our district serve our children. So, just welcome you to bring any questions forward.
Yes, three of us will be up for regular election for a four-year term on presidential election day in November.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Or do we have to do voice?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a resolution. I'm catching on. We have to have a roll call vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Nicole votes aye.
Aye.
Julie, aye.
Aye.
And Rufus, aye. Thank you. Motion passes.
We'll forgive you this meeting. You're doing, you're doing an awesome job, and it's not an easy job, but you're doing a fine job.
Thank you, Julie.
Keep up the good work, Madam President.
All right, moving on to personnel, resignations and retirements. Julie?
Yes, we do have some resignations. First one here is Adam Williamson. He has tendered his letter of resignation to accept a job at Martin County West Schools. He's been teaching at the Fairmont Elementary School since two thousand six. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Adam Williamson, elementary teacher, effective at the end of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then, the second one we have here, Dave Turnberg. Joe Brown also had alluded to this earlier. He's our director of building and grounds. He's indicated his intention to retire, and that would be effective June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Dave began his employment with the district as a custodian in nineteen eighty-five. He has served in his current position as director of building and grounds since nineteen ninety-nine. And I know personally, as working with him with the operations committee, I mean, he is just like this walking book of knowledge, and there's so much stuff that he has. And so, he will be greatly missed in that because of his, his great knowledge. Not that we'll be able to find a candidate, I'm sure, and I know he'll enjoy his retirement. But I'd like to make that motion then, to approve the retirement of Dave Turnberg, director of building and grounds, effective June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to a technology position. Rufus?
The staff wel, staff welfare committee approved a recommendation by Superintendent Brown to hire a technology intern at a rate of twelve dollars per hour, effective at the end of the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year through August of two thousand sixteen. The additional assistance is needed this summer because Will McAdams will be at National Guard duty during the month of June, and Lee Stewart will be, will be busy installing the updated district-wide technology infrastructure. So, I make a motion to approve adding a summer technology intern position, beginning at the end of the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year, and running through the end of August, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to employment. Rufus?
Jim Davison has, is recommending that Jamie Bartz be hired as an elementary special education teacher for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. Jamie is being hired as an additional teacher due to the high number of special education students enrolling for the coming school year. Jamie will graduate in May with a BS degree in elementary inclusive education. She is currently student teaching at Fairmont Elementary with experiences in both second grade and special education classrooms. I'd like to make a motion to approve the employment of Jamie Bartz as elementary special education teacher, effective for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year at a salary of BA Step One.
Thank you. Rufus, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second, Jim Davison is recommending that Camille Driscoll be hired to teach fifth grade for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. Camille holds a BS degree in middle childhood, early adolescent education from the University of Wisconsin La Crosse with a minor in mathematics. Camille completed much of her student teaching in the Wisconsin schools, but also spent three months student teaching in Bray, Ireland. I'd like to make a motion to approve the employment of Camille Driscoll in elementary, as an elementary education teacher, effective for the two thousand sixteen school year at a salary of BA Step One.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Julie, contract change?
Yes, we had hired earlier, or we had approved the employment of Ashley Olson earlier at the, this board, at the earlier meeting than tonight. And then, we had kind of hired her as an elementary special education teacher. So, at that time, we were going to be hiring her as, as, on a special license. So, now that we have the ability to have another special education teacher serve that position, that we are making a motion here now, tonight, to change her teaching assignment for Ashley Olson for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, for, and, from the elementary special education to an elementary education teacher.
Thank you. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Madam President, I just want to point out, the last three people we just talked about, Jamie Bartz is a Fairmont High School graduate, Camille Driscoll is a Blue Earth High School graduate, and Ashley Olson is a Fairmont High School graduate. Just want to point out that there's been a lot of emphasis here in Martin County and Fairbough County to make sure that we do what's called the brain gain, that we just don't let students, you know, graduate from high school, go off to college, and then never come back home. And yet, many of the people that we've hired this year for our new openings, they have Fairmont, or Fairbough County, or Martin County roots, and so, we really want to welcome them back to the region.
Welcome home.
Yep.
With open arms.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on to board committee reports, staff welfare meeting. Rufus?
So, we had a combined staff welfare operations. I think Danielle will do the, the operations part. As far as the staff welfare committee, we discussed the summer intern, the new hires of Jamie Bartz and Camille Driscoll. And then, there was a question of elementary student council stipend. Staff wel, staff welfare committee approved a recommendation to use the eight hundred, the seven hundred and eighty-two dollar stipend that is currently assigned for the Family Career Community Leaders of America to be used for elementary student council during the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. The FCC LA has not been active at the high school for over a decade. Superintendent Brown will work with representatives of Ed Minnesota, Fairmont, to develop a memo of understanding to transfer the stipend from FCC LA to elementary, to the elementary student council. Staff welfare also approved a proposal to have the district pay for the ten-dollar fee for background checks for volunteer coaches. And we discussed Dave Turnberg's retirement, and, some discussion about classified negotiations, contract discussions that'll be coming in the near future. And that was it.
Thank you. Danielle, operations?
Yeah, at operations, we talked about the different options for the school calendar for next year, the process of electing a new board member, and then, the renaming of the elementary gyms. I believe the student council, the elementary student council, sixth graders kind of put together a bunch of choices, and the kids voted, right? The kids did. So, the annex gym will now be called Little Cardinal Gym, and the main gym will be Five Lakes Gym. So, those will be the new names, and signs will be put up. There is a mock crash scheduled for grades nine through twelve, April twenty-second, so next Friday coming up. And then, we talked about, the SCSC school pool, I'm trying to remember what that was.
The health insurance rates?
Yes, the health insurance rates, yeah. I was trying to remember what that one was. And then, we had a recommendation from Matt Mahoney about no longer allowing sixth-grade students to participate in sports for seventh through twelfth graders. And then, just kind of some general talking about a cheerleading dance team combination thing maybe coming in the future, so.
Thank you.
SDCC met last night. If anybody ever wants to see really how the district functions within the classroom and the school, go to an SDCC meeting. We have some, we have a lot of reports on curriculum and PLCs and how they work, and it's always very interesting. I always leave those meetings feeling very educated about our district, and I'm grateful for all those that serve on those committees. One of the highlights of last night's meeting that most, that we'll be hearing more about is the, the district has decided to have three observer, observer coaches in the next school year, and SDCC approved Heidi Vellumini-Schlemann and Ashley Kaplan to be the SDCC coaches. And we also have Brooke Schultz, who will be the new elementary building PLC coordinator, and Ashley Kaplan will serve as the SDCC secretary for next year. There were some representatives from the various buildings to serve on that committee that were discussed, and I think it'll be a very, very fun year next year to see how these coaches interact with teachers and see the progress that we make. So, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? I have something I'd like to just take note of. The speech team competed this last weekend in the section finals, and that was in St. Peter. And from that, we have ten students going on to the state tournament this weekend at Lakeview North High School. So, congratulations to all those participants. That's quite an accomplishment.
To Ms. Perry, and that's her first year on the speech team, and Mr. Walker's helping her out. Great job for your first year.
Yes. Any other things we'd like to discuss tonight? Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Six twenty maybe?
Six nineteen.
Six nineteen, okay. That's a new, that's a new clock.
My phone's at six nineteen.
Yeah, it is. It's a new clock.
I'm sitting just around the clock.
Good job, board.